12:30 YouTube, any of those places, we welcome you this evening. If you would like to speak by phone during the time set aside for community forum or during public comment on any of the items on our agenda, you can do so by calling the following number. It is six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. Once again, six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. And the meeting ID is eight, eight, nine, two, three, four, seven, nine, zero, one, eight. Once again, meeting ID, eight, eight, nine, two, three, four, seven, nine, zero, one, eight. We will start our meeting with presentations and the first one is something we love to do and get all excited about here in Atascadero. And it's fun to see all of these faces and that is our employee recognition awards. I will turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Lewis.
One of the best things is when we get to recognize our employee family in front of their families. This, I agree with you, Mayor. Atascadero is a choice place to work and it's just a privilege to see the loyalty, the experience, and just the amazing gifts and contributions our employees make every day. And it's a pleasure to work with them. So today we get to celebrate tenure from five to 25 years. Our employees will receive service pins at an appropriate time, but for now I'm going to read about you. I'd like you to come up here as I say your name and we're going to talk about you, maybe embarrass you a little bit and really honor you. And at the end of this, we'd like you to join your family with the city council and take some pictures. So that would be really, really nice. So Scott Groomer, fire engineer, paramedic. Scott, can you come up first? We're celebrating five years of tenure for Scott. Scott originally started a career as an automotive. Well, yeah. Scott originally started a career as an automotive mechanic before becoming a police officer at Atascadero State Hospital. After serving that role for five years, I can hear these jokes coming now. Scott became a reserve firefighter for the Templeton Fire Department, igniting his passion to have a career in the fire service. Scott was hired as a firefighter for Atascadero State Hospital where he served four years before getting hired by us in October, 2018. Scott promoted to fire engineer in January, 2021 and became a licensed paramedic in February of 23, following a year of instruction, clinical hours and internship. Scott is a fire investigator and a member of the countywide investigation team. In his time off, Scott enjoys working out, camping, jeeping and spending time with his partner, Christie, daughter, Ray Lynn and stepson Spencer. Thank you for five years. Officer Ryan Gabbert. Officer Ryan back here, come on up here. You can stand up there next to me or whatever. Officer Gabbert's journey begins in the heart of Texas where he was born and raised. I couldn't pass it up. But life had other plans for him. At the age of 17, he embarked on a new chapter, leaving behind the familiar sights of Texas to start afresh in Atascadero with his parents. It was here he met his future wife, Grace. With determination to pursue his childhood dream of being a police officer, Officer Gabbert and Grace made the decision to return to Texas, where Officer Gabbert immersed himself in the rigorous training at the police academy, eventually becoming an officer. After two years of dedicated service in Texas, they decided to return to the central coast, ready to weave themselves into the fabric of our community. During his five years serving Atascadero, Officer Gabbert's commitment and integrity have shown brightly, earning him the respect of his peers and the community alike. As a field training officer and the department's liaison for Lumina, he works tirelessly to ensure the safety and well-being of those he swears to protect. That's incredible. Officer Gabbert resides in Santa Margarita area with his wife, Grace and their daughter, Ellie. Thank you so much for your dedication to our police department for keeping our community safe. Moving on to 10 years, Bruce St. John gets things built around here. Look at this. 10 years, woo baby, I know. I know you got 10 more in the tank. Can I get a commitment? Bruce was originally from Bakersfield and before joining us here at the city, he worked for Kern County as a construction project inspector. He is now our senior building inspector and performs the majority of our commercial inspections and pre-construction meetings. He also helps the footevoltic, trains our inspection staff as well as minor residential and commercial plan checks. Bruce is an ICC certified building official. That's outstanding. Thank you. One of his many ICC certifications he's obtained since working here. He was a previous graduate of the California Building Officials Leadership Academy and has served as presidents of the local ICC Central Coast chapter. So very well regarded in his profession. Bruce has great energy and a positive outlook, which have been terrific assets for the city and for our community. He and his wife Jennifer enjoy living here in town and enjoy the Atascadero lifestyle. Their son Devon is currently attending and playing soccer for Dort University in Iowa. Both of their daughters, Avila and Shelby are active in local sports and attend middle school across the street. His family is actively involved with the Atascadero Bible Church and also helps out by serving at Echo. And Bruce, I can say you give incredible service to our community and I consistently get great compliments about you from the building community. So thank you for 10 years. Katie Mulder, 10 years, come on up, Katie. Katie is recently promoted to our lead zookeeper. Congratulations and we really appreciate what you're doing at our zoo. That's outstanding. Over the past 10 years, Katie's been a zookeeper for our city and her knowledge and expertise spanned a wide variety of birds, mammals, reptiles and pollinators. Prior to coming to our zoo, Katie worked as a North America zookeeper for the Living Desert and Palm Desert for over five years. And prior to this position, worked as a marine mammal intern at the Aquarium of the Pacific in Long Beach. Katie holds a bachelor's degree from Humboldt State University with a double major in marine biology and zoology. It'd be good to have it like that Tuesday trivia thing at the Wild Fields. Katie Mulder recently promoted from zookeeper one to lead zookeeper where she'll oversee the zookeeper teams and the daily operations at the Charles Paddock Zoo. In her new role, Katie will be responsible for assisting the zoo supervisor with managing the team and the animal collection at the zoo from animal welfare to enrichment. Katie is working as the zoo's acting registrar to keep animals moving through the A Z A breeding programs, including transporting animals out to other zoos and into our zoo via the A Z A guidelines. We thank you for our new Fusa, by the way. That's nice to have Shelby the Fusa here. Katie will also be the point person for our internship with Cal Poly, which we're looking forward to and working closely with the zoo director and register on our animal collection. Katie, thank you for what you do and for stepping up. We appreciate you. 10 years, Ryan Sloan, Officer Sloan, come on up. Officer Sloan, you'll see him around downtown and many of our areas here, working hard. Grew up in Ridgecrest, California and started his career at the Ridgecrest Police Department. He spent nine years with the Ridgecrest Police Department before transferring to our team in 2013. In his nine years with the Ridgecrest Police Department, Ryan Rose was senior police officer and spent time as a narcotics detective. Ryan's prior experience and outgoing personality helped him quickly move in our police department. Ryan has recently mentioned how proud he is to have spent more of his career at Atascadero than Ridgecrest. Our game, that's outstanding. Ryan is a well-rounded officer and has worked on a multitude of assignments in Atascadero. Spending the majority of his time is either a special enforcement team detective or general crimes detective investigating our more complex crimes. Among his many accomplishments, Ryan investigated a case where the suspect was sentenced to serve 25 years to life in prison. He has also embodied the department's core belief of building partnerships and I have definitely seen that. He worked several cases with allied agencies, including one where we turned over a large amount of drugs and guns for federal prosecution. Officer Sloan supervisors would say his biggest accomplishment is his compassion for victims and the witnesses he works with. When Ryan rotated back to patrol, he was selected as a field training officer. FTOs are one of the department's most important positions because they mold the future of our department and really help set good habits and good practices. Ryan's return to patrol was short as he was selected to fill the newly created homeless liaison officer in our department's community action team. Ryan has done a fantastic job networking with other agencies and service providers, including Echo. Ryan and his partners in the CAT team have helped so many people get services and we are so grateful. I know that it's been a huge issue in our neighbor, our community and a matter of concern. And just watching you in some of the camps when I've gone out to see the compassion you have and how you problem solve and connect is incredible. And it, huh? I know, I know you guys are awesome, but I'm talking about you. But yes, I don't want to take anything away from you guys. Team is awesome. In addition to the above mentioned assignments, Ryan was a SWAT operator on the sheriff's special enforcement detail for four years. Is one of the few APD officers selected to be a team leader on the county team. Most recently, Ryan was instrumental in establishing the department's peer support and officer wellness program. He recently attended a training that certified him to conduct critical incident debriefs. These will allow public safety professionals to discuss and process high stress events, which is so important today. Ryan has been married to Teresa for 17 years and together they have a daughter, Ada, and a son, Gunner. Most people don't know that before moving to Atascadero, Ryan was a drummer in an Irish music band. Well, we're going to have to hear some of that eventually, right? Ryan is a huge San Jose Sharks hockey fan and in his spare time, he enjoys playing hockey, riding motorcycles and spending time with his family. Thank you so much for your service and 10 years. Cynthia Chavez, deputy administrative services director. Keeps the money flowing. For 10 years now, Cindy has been a principal member of the finance team. As the deputy director, she provides leadership to the department and serves as acting director when needed. She is vital in the presentation of the city's award, winning two-year budget, financial statements and audit, and prepares our state and federal reports and reconciliations, which is a lot of work and detail. She's responsible for coordinating financial and accounting activities for other departments in the city and answering staff questions about revenues, expenditures and budgets. She's part of the city's, part of the city team tasked with selecting a new asset management system and new accounting software system. These are major efforts and I have such confidence knowing that you're on the team in that. In addition, Cindy was an essential member in the implementation of the city's permitting system, Trackett. Cindy is also part of the successor agency's bond refunding team and a key member of the public safety facilities project team. Are you catching on the recurring theme? Cindy is obviously the first pick if there's important decisions to be made here, here. Cindy coordinates the city's grants, ensuring compliance, timely and accurate reporting and maximizing benefits. She works diligently to make the most of FEMA storm damage funding and answer their never ending stream of questions. Yeah. She's a founding member of the city's essentialism and safety committees, in addition to managing the city's insurance coverage and risk mitigation. That's a lot. Cindy is a graduate of San Jose State University with a bachelor of science degree in accounting. Cindy is certainly smart, dedicated, has a great sense of humor, is a consummate professional, is well respected by all who know her. We're so fortunate to have you as a member of our city family. We appreciate all you do because I think we'd come to a halt if we didn't have you doing what we do. So thank you so much. Wow, the year 2004, actually 2003. Back in 2003, things were different, huh? Luke Knight started as a student intern, Luke Knight, 20 years. Come on up here. Wow. Look at you managing in that top photo. That's a great photo there. Are you managing a situation? Of this guy. Luke's our deputy city manager and started again as an intern in 2003 due to his educational background and experience with GIS applications and software. We hired him as our full-time GIS analyst. We immediately put him to work with designing, implementing and maintaining the city's GIS database. His experience and knowledge of the city's IT needs and his awesome customer service skills led to his promotion as IT manager in 2013, where you certainly proved yourself a very capable leader, not just in the department, but in our organization. In 2022, Luke was promoted again to deputy city manager in charge of IT and has since become the leader for citywide projects, including upgrading permitting software, asset management, and presiding over our essentialism task force. Luke has shown his teamwork mindset, his understanding of meeting our city's goals and his vision of IT's effect on the entire organization. He and his wife Carrie live here in Atascadero and they are raising four rapidly growing and very active children, three boys and a girl, along with a few foster kids who keep them extremely busy with all the various projects, sports, robots, other activities, including coaching as many soccer teams as possible. And he is the commish of the Atascadero youth soccer organization, right? Yeah, there you go. Don't complain during the season to him. He just smiles at you and that's it. So you know, Luke, I get to work close with Luke as deputy city manager and I mean, your heart, your leadership and your just calm poise and how you process things. It's so appreciated in our organization. But you got a hug. That's awesome. All right, rounding out our quarter century of service. Lori Bricky, we love Lori. Come on up. 25 year anniversary. I think that comes with a diamond. That's a good one. Yeah. And your pendant there. Throughout the 20, past 25 years, Lori has truly been an indispensable member of our finance team, really just a bedrock. Lori processes all the city's accounts, payable invoices and purchase orders, keeping our vendors happy by using her amazing organizational skills, 700 invoices a month over that. That's, woo, with a level of detail that would make, this is great. This is a good one. With a level of detail that would make NASA envy us, she ensures, we know that to be true, that's what's so funny. She ensures each invoice complies with the purchasing policy. Beware if it doesn't, has a sufficient budget balance, verifies signature authority, confirms account coding and checks for duplicate invoices. Office. Lori also reviews a large number of statements each month from PG&E, gas cards, city water meters to make sure no unpaid invoices slip through the cracks and we aren't double billed for the same invoice. She oversees the city's cell phone contracts and purchases. Yeah, that alone deserves an award. That's a big, big job. And the detail, we just can't say how incredible your detail is and just how much confidence we and I have in our financial position because of the detail you have. Lori reviews all city contracts to ensure the requirements are met and in compliance with the city's purchasing policy. The only way to get a contract signed around here is to get Lori's blessing first. Thank goodness. She processes about 100 purchase orders and contracts each year. She prepares annual reports to state and federal agencies, plays a key role in preparing our annual financial statement and audit and assists the development of our award-winning two-year budget. She's the longest-serving member of the city's employee development advisory committee that we created in 2004, I believe. So that's incredible. And just have a great tenure for our Halloween event, staff activities. Lori puts the fun in our organization for sure. She assisted with the implementation of the city's permitting system, Trackett, and as part of the team selecting our new accounting software system. She attended FEMA's Emergency Management Institute in Maryland, learning how the city can respond most effectively in emergencies. She was an essential part of our team, providing endless backup to countless invoices for the FEMA funding to repair City Hall. I worked through that. I remember that was incredible. Wow, thousands. And one of the reasons we are all able to sit here tonight. In fact, Lori entered and paid all the invoices for all the infrastructure improvements we've made around our town in the last quarter century. What a legacy that is. If you can look around and speak great about that. Lori is an ultra organized and dedicated team player with an extremely strong work ethic. She is highly regarded by all city staff and she's long been referred to as the nicest person on the planet. Hundred percent, couldn't agree more. Day in and day out, she continually demonstrates her integrity and commitment to get the job done well and on time. She works quietly and efficiently and without her, our city wouldn't be where we are today, no doubt. We're incredibly fortunate to have her as a part of our city family. And I'm going through the municipal code with a fine tooth comb and pers regulations because Lori thinks she'll be retiring later this year after a successful and amazing career. And I'm trying to figure out some fine print there, but no, we're so happy for you, but we will miss you and there will be a crater in our organization. Thank you for 25 wonderful years. So if the council could come around and we can, and family, if you'd like to come up, we'd love to have you in a picture with our city council. This is terrific. Look at this is over 100 years of service to the community, I believe. That's pretty incredible, pretty incredible. Amanda is not here this evening and no, no. Amanda's Amanda. We love her. She gives incredible service and she's happy to be where she is. We'll get one of the staff and we've got to get some families up here too in a minute. There they come, come on. Please come up, families. We'd love to have you. Everybody, that's it. Thank you all so much for your service. You're so appreciated.
Not, not only is this a nice evening in and of itself to celebrate employees, but we also have past employees and families and people that come and have such a good time. All right, as we have everybody. I can't believe you guys don't want to stay for the next part of this, no? All right. All right. Oh, hey Linda, nice to see you. And we're, yeah, all these people that we haven't seen in a while either, so kind of fun. All right, so we're settling in here. We're going to be moving on to our next presentation, which is a, a Slocog is going to do a presentation on a potential countywide self-help measure and draft transportation investment plan. And I will call Mr. James Worthley forward.
Okay, there's no following that. I am James Worthley. I'm the deputy director of the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments. And I am here today to talk about what Slocog's latest effort is. And that is this local roads first, a roadmap to transportation independence. Now, I want to encourage your listeners to go to our website, localroadsfirst.com up there on the screen so they can see exactly what we're talking about and see more of the details that they might not be able to see on the screen as well. Now, Slocog is your regional transportation planning agency comprised of all seven cities and the county. Our board has 12 elected members, one from each city council with Mayor Moreno sitting on our board as well as all five supervisors. We improve transportation by allocating federal and state funds and we plan for a future that has our total population adding over 40,000 new people in the next few decades. The purpose of this presentation is to get feedback on this draft transportation investment plan. Looking at our adopted long-range regional transportation plan, we find that all investment areas have needs that cannot be met with existing federal, state and local funds. The shortfall's already begun and every year we fall further behind. Some will ask why the shortfall. Let's talk gas tax. In the seventies, eighties and nineties, more cars, more travel, more people and more gallons consumed, meaning more gas taxes collected to improve and maintain our streets and roads. In, in the last two decades, conservation hybrids, electric vehicles means that the gas tax is not sustaining itself. In 2023 alone, electric vehicles made up 25% of all new car purchases in California. And every year we fall further behind. Let's hit some of the misperceptions that are out there. Oops, I'm not there yet. Nope, that was the last slide. The trend is going to continue because of the electric vehicles and their popularity. And as they grow, the gas tax is going to diminish, meaning less dollars for Slocog, Caltrans and local agencies to maintain and improve streets and roads. Okay, some of the misperceptions out there. It's easy to imagine that all needed funds for roads and improvements will come from somewhere else, but they never do and we're falling behind as we wait for that unicorn to arrive. Looking at road maintenance, San Luis Obispo and Pismo Beach are doing pretty well with a PCI pavement condition index of 67 and 70. The higher the number, the better off you are, the less it costs to maintain them. Atascadero in 2023, I received my mailer in the mail and it came out at 49. You're trailing everybody at this point in time. Morabey dropped 15 points to beat you out for the worst, but now they're saying that they're actually better than 48. So I'm not sure where they landed. And I think I might have some corrections to make from the 2022 mailer. Now, because I see streets being repaved and slurries sealed all around City Hall, very happy to see that. In the county, the last time it hit a peak was in 2017 and it's been in decline since then. Okay, let's talk about 101. Everybody talks about Shelby Straits and Tismo and the problems that they have and they've had for over 15 years. But there, not a lot of people are talking about 101 in the north county. Unless you live in the north county, then occasionally it pops up. North County Peak Hour is surpassing that of Shelby Straits already, just outside on our highway right here, north of 41, all the way up to Paso Robles. You can see that Peak Hour number in the Caltrans books. That is by far and above the Shelby Straits issue. It just hasn't hit us as hard yet, but it will, it's coming. 25 years ago, Slocog received a $50 million grant to improve one part of 101. That was the Quest to Grade Widening Project. We finished that project in 2002, 2003. It took 25 years later, three tries and six years to get another big grant out of Caltrans to improve a short, southbound, part-time section for the Shelby Straits. There's no money set aside for the north county 101 improvements. There's no money set aside for the south county northbound improvements. And there's only that one little blip that we have from the state now for that one short section in the south county in Southbound Owen. We can't wait another 25 years to fix one more project on 101. And the funds that we have available aren't going to get us there. How do we get there? 25 counties with 89% of Californians have a special transportation sales tax in place. Our neighbors on the central coast, Santa Barbara, Monterey, San Benito and Santa Cruz all have these, this tax in place. And they're spending 25 million, 35 million, $50 million every single year for their transportation investments above the federal and state allotments that we all receive. They're not just spending that $25 million, $35 million, $50 million. They're using those dollars and leveraging hundreds of millions of dollars back to those counties from the state grant pots that we're not able to leverage that amount back to us. We cannot get our fair share. To be clear, in the last seven years, we didn't lose out on $30 million a year or $210 million a year. We lost out on $400 million worth of investments for 101, for local roads, for maintenance, for safety, for safe routes to school, for public transportation, for senior transportation. We lost out on $400 million because we can't leverage the state grant funds back to us. There's a drawback to a sales tax. It's a half cent sales tax over a 20-year period that would cost 50 cents for every hundred dollars spent on taxable goods. But remember taxable goods do not include housing, utilities, prescriptions, groceries or services. It amounts to about $2.30 a week for the median income. If it gets to the voters and is approved by the voters, it would generate $35 million a year escalating over time. It would be used to leverage about a billion dollars out of Sacramento back to our region. It would be protected from this, from Sacramento from being stolen. It would speed up project delivery and reduce the costs of these projects, some of which are escalating at a point that we can't backfill fast enough and projects will die on the vine. It guarantees that every penny that's collected for our sales tax is for transportation and for what is in the investment plan that you're going to review and comment on today. And it would contain safeguards like accountability, oversight, audits, reporting, a sunset date and a 1% maximum for Slocog administration. And have an oversight committee, just like your sales tax has an oversight committee. And it provides that tourists would also pay that tax as well. Currently, those 89% of the people that live in those other counties get a tax holiday when they come here because they don't have to pay the tax when they arrive here for transportation. Now, right now, everything's in draft form. Changes are expected. This is what I'm here for. I'm asking you to identify what changes need to be made now as a draft form before it goes to Slocog Board and could be finalized on May 1st. Let's dig into this plan. The sales tax will be collected region-wide if approved by voters. Aiming at a fair and understandable distribution, last February, this Slocog Board approved how to split up the funding. We divided our county into four subregions, north coast, north county, central county and south county. The total funding is distributed by that subregion based on the percentage of population within each subregion. So 35% of the people live in north county, 35% of the money is guaranteed to the north county. County. Then, within the subregion, a population share was set up to split it between the incorporated cities and the unincorporated communities and unincorporated area for each subregion. Now, we're going to focus on the North County, but I just want to give you the full picture. In the North Coast, using focus groups, meeting with organizations, and surveys, we found that the North Coast group really wants to see a balance between regional road safety and mobility for all. It's pretty well balanced there. Same thing with Central County, very well balanced between the two. The South County and the North County, you see a much greater tilt to regional road safety and less so investments for mobility for all. We'll get to those in a second. In Atascadero, and this is the key, what needs to be changed here? This is a review and comment I'm looking for. Road repairs Del Camino Real, Trafficway, San Lucie Road, and San Gabriel Road were identified in the surveys and outreach and groups, saying these were important roads to be improved, maintained, or safety improvements. We put that down and said, okay, let's call those out. If those roads are not correct, if there's plans to reseal them tomorrow, I want to know about it, because that's not the right thing to put on this list. But we also wanted to make sure that there's not just road maintenance done. We are hoping for community road safety and congestion improvements. On 101, parallel to 101, near 101, interchanges on 101, this is how Slocog can help deliver projects to Atascadero that are going to improve our community. We also include safe routes to school, public transit for seniors, and local road safety improvements across the board. Okay, looking back at these regional projects, if $1 is spent on road maintenance from this money, that's $1 spent. If $1 offered up to leverage improvements from the regional pot, you can leverage from the regional pot. So the $49 million is not what Atascadero gets. That's what Atascadero is guaranteed to get. This council is going to help us figure out where that money's spent, if there's money to spend. If it's all road maintenance, it's $49 million. If it's 10% for safe routes to school, we can leverage that to pull money from the regional pot and leverage it against the state and see that money go up by tenfold. So the chunk of money that's here of $84 million, I want to see Atascadero go after this as well. But to do that, you have to say, we have some money from Slocog, we're going to leverage more money from Slocog, and then we're all going to leverage more out of the state. Okay, the last thing is here is this look at PCI. Slocog can move these funds around once it's set in stone of where the amount of money's going to go. The question is when? So by, this is an illustrative look at a city that needs to spend only $3 million a year to maintain its 65 PCI. By boosting up a one-time investment for road maintenance of about $10 million, and then tailing it off, we can see that PCI get into the 70s. Again, illustrative. So right now, we're looking for your review and comment on the investment plan for Atascadero. How should we improve it? How can we make it better? After that, on Thursday, I'll be packaging all these comments up, and we will be going to the Slocog Board on May 1st in order to identify whether or not to approve or deny that final transportation investment plan. If approved, it would move back to all the jurisdictions again, seeking this council's approval. In the end, if it makes it to the voters, then it has to get 2/3 to pass. That's where we are today. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. I would actually turn this over to staff for a moment, and I'm assuming that there's been a significant amount of back and forth in terms of the investment plan and the roads and the various needs. And so I would ask, you know, our city manager or, you know, probably our director of Public Works, Mr. Nick DeBar, what types of conversations you've had, and if you see anything in here where we need to give some feedback to Slocog with regards to the investment plan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to do that. We have had several conversations with Slocog staff, and while we have some concerns in the timing of this measure, they did work with us to discuss some of the arterial streets that need to be paved, and the interchange, and off-ramp improvements, and the deck widening. Those are things that continue to be priorities that, while we have our local sales tax, F14, that goes directly to residential roads, that is where some of these regional funds could be spent. So we did spend a good bit of time putting the plan together. That does not necessarily mean we had a tacit endorsement of this, but we were giving them constructive feedback.
So in terms of the investment plan, no glaring holes or concerns?
No glaring holes or concerns on this one. You know, I was with a, I'm a member of the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee with Slocog as well, and that initial one we did four years ago, there was a lot of that calculation, how did that get dispersed, and who gets what? And a lot of this is pretty similar to it. And, you know, it's slightly a little bit different, because we are identifying, you know, projects locally that could be done. And, you know, right now, I mean, obviously, this city manager mentioned we have our own sales tax, I'm not sure that council directors to move ahead with, or come back to consider. And, but we have been working with Slocog and helping them out. And one member of my staff as well was on kind of the polling piece of it with Mr. Worthley as well. So they have provided us some input into this quite a bit, and we've responded.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. Worthley, I know that Slocog went out and did another poll, and I think the board will be seeing that ideally before our May 1st meeting, but within there should be a question or two, something with regards to other local tax measures and how that would impact. Is that correct?
That's right. On May 1st, the Slocog Board will see the results of those polls, that poll. It will get the results of the questions, and the questions we're asking, hey, would you support a citywide sales tax? Very, very brief. And then, would you support the Slocog special tax? Now, what do you think of your citywide sales tax? And see how the change happened, or what change there was.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that on the first. And then with regards to, I know that for this body, if we're looking at putting F14, well, what we call F14, but to go out and put that on the ballot again, we're hoping for F24, but I don't, I don't know that's going to happen. It would take 2/3 of this body, so four out of five of us, to put that on the ballot. When it comes to a measure like this, with regards to the eight different jurisdictions plus Slocog, what is the voting requirement to get that onto the ballot?
So if it gets passed Slocog on May 1st, it goes back to the eight jurisdictions.
And that's 50% plus one?
50% plus one.
If all are there, seven need to vote for that.
Correct.
Okay.
And then it comes back to councils like yours. It requires a majority vote to approve the investment plan. That would be what you're tasked with approving or denying that investment plan at that time. And then the board of supervisors to approve or deny. If the board supervisors deny it, it doesn't go any further. It won't go to the voters.
And that needs to be how many votes?
Three out of five also. A majority vote also in the supervisors. When it goes to, will it be placed on the ballot? That requires 2/3 of the elected body that's putting it on the ballot, which would be Slocog, so eight out of 12.
So Slocog is the final determinant as to whether it goes on the ballot, and that's a 2/3?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Looks like Councilmember Warbo maybe has a question.
To follow on to that mayor's question, because I'm not sure I fully understood it. You're saying, I mean, the board of supervisors votes no, it's dead. So their approval is mandatory. And you're saying as it comes back to each city, you know, three members, you know, have to vote, but how many of the cities have to vote? In other words, seven cities, assuming the board of supervisors approves it, because otherwise it's dead. How many of the seven cities have to vote in the affirmative for it to go?
A minimum of four cities have to approve.
A majority of the cities.
A majority of the cities. But there's another wrinkle that makes it more confusing than that, because that's just how California law always is. It's a majority of cities, the easy part, with a majority of the incorporated population.
Okay, got it. So if the four smallest cities said yes, and the three biggest cities said no, that wouldn't cut it either.
That's correct.
Yeah. Definitely a lot of things to keep track of. Okay, and that was kind of a question about the process. I'm glad the mayor brought that up. You, I did have a technical question for you back a couple slides. On the PCI, you showed with the measure, the PCI hopefully getting up into the 70s, and this is countywide. That's that slide, yes. You showed PCI staying the same with no measure. And one of the things we found in Atascadero, prior to F14, the expectation is that, you know, without the measure, we would have had a continually declining PCI, and that with F14, we've been able to maintain and grow a few points, but that without it. So I'm a little surprised that without the measure, the PCI would stay the same. Or is that because a lot of the cities themselves are doing better?
Again, illustrative city here. So with F14 staying in place, you're moving up the ladder very slowly. In 2014, the PCI was 47. Eight years later, you're at 49. How much more could you do if we don't just do status quo? I'm assuming F14 would be renewed, and then that status quo, and this would be on top of that.
But I'm asking, this is a countywide PCI of 60 you're showing in that.
No, this is a general illustrative picture of a city.
Just a luster.
Yeah, just to imagine a city that only needs to spend $3 million to keep their 65.
Assuming without this measure, you would see countywide PCI decline. Was that a test spec?
Based on the trends, again, countywide, the county unincorporated area alone makes up 45% of our roads, if not more. And I want to say 60% now. They've been declining 64, 63, 60, now down to 60 in 2022. And I'm not sure where they are today, but I bet they're not going upward at this point in time. So on average, except for slow and Pismo Beach, everybody's staying status quo or moving into the better very slightly, except for the county board, county unincorporated areas.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretemfun.
Yeah, I want to come back to some of the numbers that you were tossing around earlier, because you were talking about this getting, you know, $400 million, and then talking about it getting us $1 billion. And can you come back and clarify that, go back to your slide that shows those numbers and walk us back on what, over what period of time, what kind of gain we would be getting with this? And how that relates, how much of it is incremental to what we currently get?
Like I said, if every dollar was spent on road maintenance, we wouldn't get a dime over those dollars. We couldn't leverage anything back from the state. But by putting in money as match, you're able to leverage three, four, five, sometimes even 10 times your match dollars back from the state. Looking at what we realistically could put in to the pot to match state grants, $400 or $400 million, $200 million over seven years is kind of where I was. But over a 20-year period, it's longer, more money to match, more money to bring money in. A lot of times, people ask, well, that's not realistic. You can't get $100 million out of the state. That's not true. Santa Cruz County, using this tax, this money, put in $32 million to offer as their match, and they leveraged $115 million out of the state in one cycle program. And they can do it again three more times with their sales tax, because they have more money to continue to match and bring back money from them. And everybody says, oh, Santa Cruz is one of those big counties up in the Bay Area. They're slightly smaller in population than we are, 275,000 people versus our 282. But they're doing it far better than we're doing it.
Right, okay, I get the general concept. I'm still working on, you know, 3, 4, 5, 10, you know, is sort of loose there for me. Can we, can we talk, I can see the numbers here, what you're showing, that how much the other neighboring counties have raised over some period of time. Is this money that they raised, is it what they leveraged from the state? What are we looking at?
So this is money they raise every single year and spend on transportation, on top of their allotments or formula funds that they receive, like we receive, from the state and federal governments. And then they take this, Santa Cruz gets $24 million a year, but they cobble together $32 million and turn it into $150 million in one year.
Right, so the projection is that we would generate how much money with our tax?
We would generate $35 million in one year.
$35 million a year, that we would be able to use that based on the ratios of it's 3, 4, 5, 10. Let's just assume that it's maybe four, to be conservative. Okay, so you're saying that on a given year, we would be able to leverage that to over 130 million?
I would put it as $40 to $50 million in one year. Take $10 million out of that 35. $25 million goes to road maintenance, $10 million goes to improvements that we're leveraging state funds, and that $10 million turns into $40 or $50 million.
Okay, so only the money that goes for improvements as opposed to maintenance is eligible for the state matching money?
Generally, that's about right, yeah.
Okay, and how does it get? There's a lot of concerns, I've talked with people about this and listened to conversations about this with other groups, that the, as more counties go self-help, there's a bigger pool of money available for the non-self-help counties, and this would just not necessarily pay off in the way that you envisioned. Can you address that question?
There is no pool. There's no pool set aside for non-self-help counties. There is a pool set aside just for self-help counties. Those self-help counties means those with the sales tax dedicated to transportation. We don't have access to some of those pools at all. We can compete for other pools of funds, but at a lower level, you put in a dime, you get out a dollar, you put in a dollar, you get out $10. So we're just being outcompeted in that way. Not that we can't try, we do so frequently. We fail about 1/3 of the time, but what we're capturing is far less than what these other counties are able to capture, because they can offer up a bigger match.
Okay, and if we join as a self-help county, if we were to do that, and our voters were to approve that, then there would be the same pool of funds at the state, but for the self-help counties, but we'd be, you know, we're diluting that pool for the other folks that are self-help counties.
We then get to compete on their level, and we continue to get the same funds we've always gotten as federal and state formula allotments, just like those self-help counties also get their typical state and federal allotments. But then there's this added pool that grows the pie, so to speak, so that more money can come back to San Luis Obispo County and the region.
Right, okay. And you talked about leveraging money from the regional pot. Can you be a little clarified by what you're talking about there?
Let's go back to the regional pot. Okay, so let's look at this and look at North County US 101 Regional Safety Corridor Improvements between Quest to Grade and San Miguel to address safety, mobility, and congestion improvements. So let's just pretend, worst-case scenario, the county and Paso Robles say, we want to leverage every one of those dollars in that section. And the way to do that is, just like the state's making us try to match their dollars, we'd be saying, you have to have skin in the game here as well. So if every dollar of that $49 million went to road maintenance, how do you expect to catch one interchange improvement? If $5 million went for one of your interchange improvements, now you're saying, hey, we've got skin in the game, we want to improve our number-one interchange, can you match it with the 67 million or parts of it? And then leverage those dollars back to Atascadero. Imagining it the other way, Paso Robles and Templeton, and the county don't put in any money. Now it's up for grabs. This council says, we want to leverage every dollar we can, we want to do three interchanges, $5 million each from the city of Atascadero from money that's in this measure, then leverages the other $37 million, because I think we're trying to put $30 million on the Union Road Overcrossing.
So the regional road safety money in this So the regional road safety money in this plan is not definitely allocated. It's only available if the participating governing bodies in that region choose to forego that money for maintenance so that they can dedicate it to an interchange. And then we get some of this regional money. Otherwise, we don't get any of that money.
Choose to find some money to match it. I'm not saying a hundred percent can't be road maintenance. Imagine as two thirds again, two thirds of it goes to road maintenance and one third goes to leveraging money for the Salinas River Trail. That then would leverage money from Slocog as well as the state.
I'm not following.
Yeah, you you put if you put one dollar in.
Okay, oh, so so the city then has to contribute additionally above the above the revenues from this tax in order to get the monies from this tax?
It's the game we're in. This is how we have to go with the state to try to get state money. But you don't have to. This council could decide we want to offer road maintenance. That's fine. But you're leaving money on the table, just like we're leaving money on the table of the state. The more money we can offer up as match, whether it's local or regional, we can get more money from the regional or state pots.
What I'm wondering is because we're we're not voting on anything tonight. This is informational, but perhaps if there are any council members that want a little more a deeper dive, you could you live in Atascadero? And we could do some one on ones or two two on ones with you if that was desired.
I'm happy to anytime and answer all those questions.
I think, yeah, but what are we needing needing to give feedback tonight on this plan?
I think if if staff is if staff has said that the projects that they've listed are the ones that, you know, yes, are, you know, kind of on the horizon. These are the things that we that need to be taken care of and staff is good with that. I don't think we need to give different direction in terms of roads and and things like that. So.
Right. And do we need to give directions on the aspect of the plan in which there's only money for interchange improvements if jurisdictions add additional money and rejigger their budget so that we can add more money to the the pot? Is that?
So this plan offers money to you that you can use to offer money back to match. It doesn't have to be one to one. Right now, we set up targets of that thirty million and nineteen million. Those are not going to be locked in as you must spend a minimum of nineteen million dollars on community betterments like El Comino Real's downtown improvements.
Okay, question. Are we giving you feed? Are you needing to get feedback from us tonight on that formula? That way of approaching how the dollars are allocated?
If you had been the first city, I'd say yes. Since you're the last city, I don't think I need it because none of the other cities said lock in these numbers for betterments and for road maintenance.
If I may, I think we're getting really granular. I I think that what the the point is, you can spend your money, your two thirds money on local roads and that's it. Or you can say, you know what, Slocog, we want to participate in a regional project in our community. If we put some money up, we'll have a better shot at getting some of that additional Slocog money. That's the.
Right. Thank you. That that's a much clearer explanation than I was just getting getting, and I appreciate the summary. And if we don't need to give feedback on that, then I can defer for the questions.
So lastly, you had said that you were coming to the councils for investment plan only, not whether or not to put that on the ballot. Is that correct?
That's correct. The the board, Slocog Board makes the decision whether or not it goes on the ballot on May twenty ninth.
Okay, that seems from my memory, I thought it was different in twenty sixteen where you had asked for both, but that's fine. Are we good with questions now?
But it will come back to us for that.
For the investment plan later.
For approval, correct.
Well, and approval to put it on the ballot. Well, because you said multiple, you could majority of cities have to.
Yeah, so four cities could deny the investment plan and that would deny it to go to the ballot. Okay, because I mean, it's you're not voting on it to go to the voters. You're voting on the plan if it's good or bad.
I would suggest if the council's concerned about timing or something else, you make that very clear at the next meeting when you see it.
Correct. That's why I was wondering whether we even need to bring that up tonight or just wait.
Yeah, I think we didn't know if we were voting on the investment plan and whether or not to put it on the ballot, not tonight.
Yeah.
But what you're saying is what you will bring before us is, do you want to vote on this plan, yea or nay? And that's what the majority of cities have to. Okay. Thank you. I think we are good for this evening then. Thank you, Mr. Worley.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to our consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered to be routine and non controversial by city staff and can be approved in one motion of the city council. I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment on the consent calendar. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on the consent calendar who is here in chambers? I'm not seeing any. Let me go to our Zoom attendees. Is there anyone in Zoom or on the phone wishing to speak on public comment for the consent calendar? You could raise your hand. All right, I am not seeing any, so I will go ahead and close public comment. And I will bring it back to council for comments, questions, or if anybody want to pull an item. I would like a brief clarification, maybe. I know that when I talked with the city manager, the weed abatement, I'm hearing that we're going to have more possibly a significant number of notices that will go out this year compared to the previous year. And and perhaps Chief Bryson, you could let the public know what what they can expect.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So it is weed abatement season. This is the first of three council meetings. I think you'll get to hear about weed abatement. The numbers are up a little bit. I think there's quite a few factors in there. We may we are or will be mailing out about sixty two hundred notices to people this year out of eleven thousand and two hundred or so parcels. So that's quite a bit. And that's that's a jump of about five hundred and forty five over last year. So not a tremendous amount since last year, but that's it's a significant amount. I think we've got several factors in there. First is the, we had a lot of grass last year, but we also have a lot of grass this year. And I think the timing of our sun, rain, sun again and rain again again this weekend. I think it just continues to grow and grow. And I think we do have a larger grass crop this year than last year. I think another thing is, we have to remember that this notice that goes out, it is for the potential of having weeds. So even if you have cut or are cutting in the middle of this inspection time. If we go around and we see that you will have the potential, if you're going to need a mower at some point again in the future, you need to get a notice. And that allows us to use the city contractor to go back and cut those weeds. So if they're cut in May, and then we do not notice them, we need to say they don't follow up and cut again and by the June one. We have no way to go through the city contractor process and put it on the tax assessment rolls. The alternative is the code enforcement way, and it's just not an easy or productive way to conduct weed abatement. So I think the increase of notices over the last few years is getting us where we need to get to to hit that potential mark, right? We've we've been very good over the years of of hitting the people that have done their weed abatement and then we move on. We're getting much better and Chief Van Saans here in the audience, he's the one that actually does runs the program. And he's getting very good at finding those properties that will have potential, will need a mower at some point during the summertime as we have that regrowth. So I think we're getting where we need to be, even though it's stepping up each year.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions? Anybody needing to pull an item? Are we?
I pull lots of weeds.
Thank you. Yes. And thanks to all of you who actually do comply with the weed abatement ordinance by far and away, the large, large, large majority of people do. And it's one of the key factors in mitigating fuels and and making sure that we stay safe. So thank you for that. So I will look for a motion for the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
A second. We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Pro Temfunk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Deras?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temfunk?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five oh.
Thank you. We'll move on to updates from the city manager, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of council. I want to start out tonight with some new businesses in town, so more great places to eat. Johnny Boy's Baglery and Jewish Delicatessen has opened on Entrada next to Bramble Pie, both owned by Emily Goldstein. And you name Great Bagels, they sell out very quickly. So you want to get their pastrami sandwiches, rubens, so some really good stuff there. And Blast and Brew has opened. And so at at the old Santa Maria Brewing. And that's also a terrific chain of pizzas, hamburgers, salads, full bar, et cetera. So that'll be another place for entertainment for our community. Opening May, we will see Sonic at San and Samo and Amsterdam Coffee here on the corner of West Mall and Palma, which will be nice. They also have wine in the evening. So there'll be, people have talked about, why don't I have coffee and wine and things on the Sutton Gardens? We're starting to see some of that happen. So that's terrific, quite a bit happening. Regarding the downtown paving project, so the weather has started to warm. And as I've been talking about for months, when that happens, we'd start seeing this move forward. And so you are now seeing micro surfacing. It's that's the process of grinding the street and covering it with a slick, some slurry and oil that's happening at this time in downtown. All three alleys are also having work as well as West Wall, Lewis and East Mall. We did try and get this done over the holiday. I know there are some who said, well, why didn't they do it over the holiday? Because it was raining and we want to protect our investment in paving. Now, the poor use of taxpayer funds to pave in the rain. So we were waiting for good weather. We had it lined up to do all schools out, but we appreciate people's patience. Making sure the conditions are perfect so we get the most out of our paving job. For next week, April fifteenth through the nineteenth, there will be intermittent road closures and no parking areas during pavement striping that will take place downtown on East Mall, Traffic Way and on Lewis and Palma Avenue. So we appreciate everyone's patience. This is the final phase and the streets that are done look terrific. Okay, residential waste. This is a big program every year. This is an opportunity to start your spring cleaning. We're giving you a couple of weeks' notice here. So from April twentieth to twenty seventh, all Waste Management customers in Atascadero can get rid of household waste for free. So here's the catch. You need to go get your voucher to participate in this. So for more information, contact Waste Management, eight zero five four six six three six three six. Or you can visit the local office here in Atascadero to get your voucher. You want to make sure you have that. So when you show up with your load, you turn that in and you can dump for free. Another opportunity, spring cleaning is the Citywide Yard Sale. So the date is April twentieth from eight AM to two PM. Everyone gets to come on out. You can buy, you can sell. If you are selling, you need to register for your location for Seventh Annual Citywide Yard Sale by five PM on April seventeenth to be on the digital map. Registration benefits the Joy Playground in Colony Park and their non refundable donations. But what a neat thing, we can give people a chance to recycle, reuse goods and contribute to the Joy Playground. So this is a terrific program. And sales locations will be held across homes and businesses throughout town. Next slide, I want to show Party for the Planet. Join us at the zoo, the Thirteenth Annual Party for the Planet on Earth Day, April twentieth. Boy, there's a lot going on on April twentieth. The council will be busy too that day. From ten to three, Party for the Planet. This provides a fun way for children of all ages to experience interactive adventures, hands on activities, exhibits by sustainability conscious businesses and a variety of educational demonstrations. Food will be available purchased. But all activities are included with general missions. Party for the Planet on April twentieth. I did mention earlier that we have a new Fossa Fusa, pardon me, at the zoo Shelby. There she is, little Shelby, the Fusa. We're glad to have her here. And she came to us from the Central Florida Zoo and Botanic Gardens through the AZA Species Survival Plan. So we're Shelby's final home. We're glad to have her. She's thirteen years old. And while we know a little about lifespans, they tend to live about twenty years in zoos. So we get to get used to Shelby enjoying her. Fun facts, Fuses are from Madagascar off the coast of Africa and are the largest carnivores. They eat lemurs. So we're trying to keep our Fusa's cage away from the lemurs. It kind of makes them anxious. And anything from small mammals to fish and birds, the Fusa is classified as vulnerable with only twenty five hundred left in the wilderness. Low numbers due to loss of habitat, competition with food, et cetera. I think what I just want to point out a little bit about AZA and accreditation and the point of zoos. And I think some people still, why do we put these animals in these cages? Why do we have them in here? It isn't about that. It's about conservation and protecting species. And the Fusa would likely be extinct if we didn't breed and protect them in our zoos and educate people about the impact of the habitat in Madagascar. And so really, we are part of that mission to protect these species and educate and conserve habitat. And the last thing I wanted to share on April twentieth, I'm sorry, council, you can't go to the zoo event and you can't go to the yard sale. Because we will be having a strategic planning session here in the city council chamber. I did want to go over some of the agenda topics, some members of the community, if they're interested in any of these things, can certainly come and that they're aware. So this will be, we're really thrilled to share with you the plans for the new fire station, improvements to Fire Station Two and the rehabilitation of the police department. So we have completed that work. We want to show you the scope, the size of the buildings, interior dimensions. Now, they're not designed yet. That's what we want to, we just want to show you what fits in the footprint, the types of amenities the new stations will have. If we move forward at the design build process, the actual architects will compete, design those spaces and will choose one of those. So but nonetheless, we can show you how big the buildings need to be and what will be included in them, which will be very interesting to you. We'll also show you a timeline and the budget. And we do believe we have the funds to move forward. Staff's been working for the last several months to get the projects right sized, so they are affordable. We're very conservative in our approach there, but we're very pleased to show you your future fire and police stations. And the chiefs were smiling after the last meeting, so I think we're on track. We also want to talk about zoo accreditation. There's a lot going on at the zoo. We really want to walk you through what those steps are, the improvements we believe need to be made, the things we need to accomplish from the last accreditation that need to be done. Looking at operations of the zoo and the support we're getting from friends. So I want to ask you about that. We want to talk about trust building and community engagement and some things we can do to reach out to our community to fill that void of information. And some ways we think we can do that. We want to bring back the city legislative platform to you. That was something you all have asked to come back. We'll remind you some of the questions you had at the council meeting where you approved it. We'll have it attached to the agenda so you can see that. We're making progress on essentialism. So well, the essentialism task force will be presenting on some of the things we've done. So Mayor, I know you'll appreciate that. And kind of our next big bites of the elephant as we essentialize our organization, we want to share with you our mission statement, right? Service community quality of life and where we're headed with that and how the staff is owning that, where we're headed with that. We want to talk about short term rentals. By the way, we're going to try and get all this done in five hours because we need to adjourn at three so we can get spiffed up in our black tie and dresses and head to the chamber awards dinner. But short term rentals, we want to talk, give you an update on where those are. And then we want to talk about dollar ride service provision, the best way to provide that service, not the service itself, but how we provide it. So full list of things, that's what's coming. And we're looking forward to a very productive day. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Any points of clarification, Councilmember Deras?
Thank you. Just one quick question, Jim, on the the voucher for the landfill. Is that just pickup trucks only? Trailers not allowed? Or what's, I remember in the past, there was regulations on that. And I don't recall if you had mentioned.
It's typically just, it is like if you were a household, you're typical, you can't pull a big trailer behind you and get a free.
Trailer, but some people can't put.
The no no said no construction debris, but it didn't, you could bring appliances, stuff, carpets.
I think it has to be in a in a standard truck. You can't have a big trailer attached with a.
I think that is true. Oh, there. Acceptable items. Must arrive in a personal vehicle, no trailers. There you go. And unload items yourself. You must wear a safety vest. And you can borrow a vest from the landfill and you must present your voucher. So great question, Councilmember there.
I just want to make sure people understand that because, I mean, some people don't, might have a little trailer, but don't have a pickup truck. So it's just sometimes it's a little awkward, but anyhow, just want to make sure people understand that. Thank you.
And there's the address, by the way, if people don't know, it's eighty seven forty Pueblo Avenue. So it's kind of between Curburel and Pueblo on the back side on the freeway side, if you want to pick up your voucher.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. All right, now we're on to community forum. Those of you here for community forum, I know this is a little bit later than it usually happens, but thank you for waiting. This is the portion of our meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on an item that is not on our agenda this evening, but oh, but over which council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes and we set aside a total of thirty minutes for community forums. So please, our first speaker, welcome to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Rabbi Mayor Gordon and together with my wife, I serve as the Director of Chabad of Passerobles, serving Passerobles, Atascadero and the entire northern San Luis Obispo County. Chabad Lubavitch is a Jewish educational outreach organization dedicated to adding goodness and kindness to all with over three hundred centers in California and over three and a half thousand centers in over one hundred countries. Chabad Lubavitch is the largest and fastest growing Jewish organization. This morning, the County Board of Supervisors voted on a resolution for Education and Sharing Day, which will be on April nineteenth this year. And I just want to tell you about it. I want to thank the mayor for this certificate of recognition for Education and Sharing Day. And which is a vital and critical issue for our communities in today's day and age. Education and Sharing Day on April nineteenth honors Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnerst, a blessed memory known as the Rebbe. The Rebbe, who's the leader of the Chabad Lubavitch movement, is considered to be the most influential rabbi in modern history. This year will mark a hundred and twenty two years from the Rebbe's birth in Ukraine in nineteen oh two. After escaping the horrors in Europe and arriving to the United States in nineteen forty one, the Rebbe focused his efforts not only on rebuilding and reenergizing the Jewish community after the devastation of the Holocaust. The Rebbe paid great attention to the needs of our society as a whole. The Rebbe constantly reminded us that education is not only a means of providing information and knowledge to the student, but a means to impart morals and values, to teach a child how to be the best person that he or she can be and that he or she can. To teach a child how to be the best person that he or she can be and that he or she can be that person they might only dream of being. Education is often seen as giving the child the knowledge and the means to build a career and to make it as an individual in the big world. The Rebbe taught us and he encouraged world leaders and education activists. On the need to focus a great education towards character building and increased awareness of morals and ethics. To teach the students how every human being is created in the divine image of God, to look out for one another and to add goodness and kindness in the world. This is why in 1979, 1978, the US Congress designated the Rebbe's birthday. Four days before Passover on the Jewish calendar as education day, honoring the Rebbe and his efforts for education and sharing among all people. This was followed by President Carter and every US president since then, including our president Biden declaring this day. As a day to refocus our efforts on education and sharing, creating a brighter future for society. I encourage all of us here in this great city of Atascadero. And we all have the opportunity to educate, whether as a teacher, as a parent, or just as an acquaintance. To take a few moments next Friday, April 19th and think about what we can do. To prepare the next generation, the leaders of tomorrow for a better and brighter future. I would like to bless you, the mayor and city council, that your efforts in promoting education and sharing day in Atascadero. Should bring about a brighter future in the city, which is already a kind and caring city. May it bring about more acts of random kindness, sharing and compassion. Thank you for everything you do and for this certificate of recognition.
Thank you, Rabbi. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. Jeff Austin, resident here in the city. Couple of things. First of all, Chief Suddles, you may not be aware, but you will get a letter in the mail from the fire department for redebatement that seems to happen. Secondly. On a more serious note, I'll actually, I'll take public works for a minute and say that they actually used a bucket of pavement. And it's holding very well on the intersection at Del Rio. Thank you very much. It actually looks professionally done. I was told they actually bought a couple pallets of that bucket now. So that's saving our city a lot of money. On a more serious note, the presentation from Slow cog is very disappointing. I'm selfish. I want our city roads to be maintained. And clarification that when F 14 sunsets, whatever the new tax measure is should be supported by our community. We are making major strides here in improving our roads and going forward, they will only get better because we're not getting worse now. So I fully support keeping our tax measure. At a half percent for our roads here in Atascadero. I don't like the fact that it's what if maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't going forward from slow cog. The county has made it. The board of supervisors, a non-priority for roads. So for non-priority for roads, why are we having to have the burden now? To have another tax, leverage that to get our tax revenue back from the state of California, which we pay. So I urge this council to say no. And I urge this city to say no. Yes, we need overpasses. Yes, we need different infrastructure. But I think it is a travesty if our city supports this. And I believe our city to the north said no at their last council meeting. And I hope we do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to speak for community forum? Please come forward. Yes.
My name's Abel Contreras. I'm a real estate professional. I'm here with two other owners that own apartment buildings. Off of San Paulo Road, right next to the brand new Sonic. And those apartment buildings were constructed during the era of Kelly Gerhardt. And they were built with kitchens as apartment buildings, but the city at the time zoned them as hotel. So there's a deed restriction that they cannot be rented for more than 30 days at a time. Heather, I saw you speak at the Generation Build. That was a great speech. I know that you're very pro housing. So at this time, all of those apartments are non-conforming. And the cities, at least the planning department has made it clear that they want to see those to be operated as hotels. However, they weren't built to be hotels. It's not feasible for them to be treated as such. And I know that the new general plan that just came out has rezoned those to mixed use. So the owners of those apartment buildings would like to figure out. What that means for their properties, if they're going to be able to keep them. Their tenants are paying well below market rent. It's not feasible for them to be relocated. They may want to speak as well and maybe clarify a bit more, but I'm not sure. How we can proceed.
Thank you. I'll answer all questions after we close community forum, but you're welcome. If there's anything more that you wanted to say, or anyone else is also welcome to come up, but I will connect you with staff for sure. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Contreras. And anyone else that wants to speak, come, come on over.
My name is Toby Brangie and I own forty six hundred San Paolo, which is right next to Sonic. Couple of things I, I follow along with Abel that we are, I am, and they are. A fairly low income workforce housing. And my actual units all have kitchens. They were never, well, I don't know what Kelly Gerhardt did, but when we obtained them, they have for almost 14 years now. They've been. Long-term housing. We may have had nurses, traveling nurses that come in, but they usually stay longer than 30 days. So there's that. And another issue that I'd like to bring to light to the council. Is that I am right directly next to Sonic and there is a large opening. Between right next to Sonic and our. Building. And right now there is no barrier. This is a problem because it looks like with the signage that our driveway. And that will be an access point going directly into Sonic. This is a problem. This would cause people, if there's overflow on Sonic side. To use my private property and the other owner's private property as an inlet to go directly into the Sonic drive-through. We are not, we are private property. We're not. Zoned to be a stacking for drive-through. So I would like to propose a barrier for that. For that opening. And I've been working with city planning and the fire chief. Trying to get answers on how I can get a barrier there because it is a huge safety issue. There will be traffic both ways possibly. There could be accidents happening in there because it's very vague. On how that's working. I would like no traffic there, but there's also a fire. On the curb, there's a big fire lane. So it would be blocking fire access. I'm trying to work with the fire chief about getting a fire compliant gate there. So. That's it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is John Olson. I purchased the property that was called the San Paolo Inn about 12 years ago. Mr. Lewis, I think you were the city manager at the time we met at the time. It's I've since remained it when I purchased it, the Atascadero Mission cottages. When I purchased it, it was primarily occupied by. Non-workforce. Residents, I would say. The police department called my property Crack Alley. There are 11 units. They're all single bedroom units, ground floor. I invested about a million dollars in purchasing and upgrading it to very high quality. I would say almost luxury furnished units. I've hosted traveling professionals, traveling nurses and medical staff, healthcare professionals. A variety of construction managers that have come to the area with, with their companies paying for them to stay here. The primary benefit for most of my residents or guests. Is that they're fully furnished. They're very high quality. They were built and have always had full kitchens and appliances in them. It's no longer crack alley. I haven't seen a police officer, had to call the police department since after the first year. It's been a substantial improvement. I know that the people that, well, we have a small community, but it's very nice. And I know all my residents usually within a day of them moving in, everybody knows and likes each other. I run a tight ship and nobody causes problems on my property anymore. I've had three evictions in 12 years. The people that lived there when I purchased it. I wrote them all letters saying that I know that there were a lot of. Problems with the property. There were air conditioners that didn't work. I don't think any of the air conditioners worked when I bought them. I had people that were paying week to week with the prior owners. It was never built and could never operate as a hotel or motel. In the time that I've bought the property. There have been several large new hotels built in town that I'm sure you're all familiar with. Most of them have very low occupancy rates most of the year, except for summer holidays. And three-day weekends. I set aside two of my 11 units for Airbnbs, which is also another source of new competition since I've purchased them. Because you have people with homes renting out rooms, ADUs, accessory units. Brandy units and just bedrooms in their house, which are additional competition. I could not possibly operate or make a profit. As a commercial motel or hotel. I can't compete with Motel Six even, which is frankly, not a comparable property. That you can't have a housekeeping staff. I don't have a restaurant. I'm not not close to the center of town. I got Sonic coming in. And as well as In-N-Out Burger. That's the attraction for the neighborhood that we have property on is In-N-Out Burger and Sonic Burger. I was told, I don't know the validity of it, that there were several neighbors protest.
Fifteen seconds and wrap up.
Several neighbors protested the development originally. I was told that one very impassioned neighbor that was against it being a commercial property or motel hotel. Committed suicide over the issue back 25, 26 years ago when it was built. Anyway, I, I've, I've was told that this was going to, this. Conditional use permit or deed restriction was going to be removed when I bought the property. I have an email from a staff member at city planning.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I'll make sure we follow up. Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak who are here in chambers? Okay. I'm not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Not seeing any, nobody on the phone. Is that correct, Luke? Okay. We'll go ahead and close community forum and bring that back to council and staff. I will ask staff, I think the city manager, you had mentioned to me that there were some. Some issues over in that area with the San, it's not, no longer the San Paolo Inns, apparently. Thank you very much too for investing in and claiming that up. But are there conversations that staff can be having with owners over there to see if there's, you know, what the possibilities are?
I think it's always good to start with the staff and having these conversations with us. So Mr. Dussmore, have you had any conversations with them on zoning land use opportunities there?
Yes.
Best use of the property?
Absolutely. Yes. We've had many conversations. This has been a very interesting listening session here tonight from some of these folks that have these properties. This has been a longstanding conversation with our planning team and these property owners for several years. It's quite revealing that these properties are not being used for their intended use. They're all within the commercial tourist zone. It was zoned that way prior to these units being built. And in fact, there was a deed restriction put on them because they had kitchens in them. The city was concerned that they would. Evolve into long-term residential, which they have. And they're not authorized to do that today. And city staff has never given that authorization. So this has been a longstanding code enforcement case. What they really should do is come in and seek a rezoning of that property. And seek a use permit to do residential, if that's what they'd like. And that's the information that we've given to them over the years. However, they've chosen not to do that. So. In addition, there are several units there that were never completed and that were occupied without. Their occupancy certificate being granted. So there's a number of significant issues here. That have been an ongoing enforcement case where the owners have chosen not to follow the city's policies. So. Very challenging and they've revealed a lot of the information here tonight that we weren't aware of, that they were being used long-term. Now that's been confirmed. So. It's something the city needs to continue working with them on. And I think it's been a topic of the general plan update that. It should be rezoned to something different. And I think the draft proposal now on the map is mixed use. And whether that would allow these units to remain as conforming uses is yet to be resolved. There's not just issues with zoning, there's issues with land use compatibility. It's a zoning district that is designed for. Freeway serving, fast food restaurants, fuel stations, hotels and motels. That's what this commercial tourist zoning district is designed for. It's now, it looks like it has metamorphosisized into a residential neighborhood. And these folks are asking for protection of their residential neighborhood, but at the same time, it's not. Allowed to be a residential neighborhood. So I think there's concern about Sonic opening up in place of where there was the Kentucky Fried Chicken. Now that's been closed for several years. It's been quiet there. And so now that this Sonic is opening up, they're concerned about this driveway access being used through their property. Whereas the reality is there is no reason that anybody would go from the drive-through through to the San Paolo Inn because. Their driveway access is so far away on the other side of the property that a car couldn't go through there without. Circumnavigating a very large property. So what we asked the owners of Sonic to do was put signs prohibiting traffic to enter that way. And arrows that point one way only to not enter that area, but we can't fence it off because it would inhibit the fire access through those properties. They were designed all to work together. And there's very good access from the car wash and the fuel station. And the Sonic drive-through to get into this property very quickly. Otherwise you've got to go all the way around the corner at San Paolo to get into the property, which could impede emergency access. So our fire marshal has examined this issue and we did offer them a solution. And that is to install what's called a Knox lock gate. Which can be operated with an automated button from fire services. So the gate will open to allow them to go through. That's an expensive feature to add. So I don't know if they're willing to pay for that and do that. But it's more of a safety issue to add a gate. Than it is to leave it open. I think we heard concerns about leaving it open and it's a safety issue, but there's so much room. On the Sonic property to navigate through the drive-through, navigate around the drive-through and park. The vehicles would never have the desire to go into this lodging property. So I think that that concern can be covered if they want to with a gate or left alone, and it's still going to function fine. But the other side of the coin is where it's not a protection of a residential neighborhood. It's protection of lodging. Until such a time the city rezones at or allows these uses to be conforming if that's where we choose to go. But other than that, it's. It's still a substantial enforcement issue.
Understand. Okay. Thank you. And, and no, 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 I, we, we can't. Community forum, community is, community forum is closed. Please, please, sir, please, community forum is closed. You can reach out to staff anytime. We can continue this conversation. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that we are, sir, please, please respect the process. Thank you. We cannot go into conversations on this tonight. We've, this isn't a noticed item. So it is something where we have to. Take this information. Staff has given us a little bit of information. And if, if we, if you are amenable and we want to sit down with staff and see how do we look at this area and what is happening? It sounds like we've done that in the past and maybe it's time for a new sit down. So let's look at maybe having that conversation. I'm waiting for staff to do that, reach out. All right. Thank you very much. All right. And. We have no public hearing. We have no. Management reports. So we'll move on to council announcements and committee reports. This is council members of their own initiative. Can mention things briefly that they've been involved with in the community or update us on boards and. And different positions that they sit on throughout the county in service as part of their, the city of Atascadero. So. I will start from my right to my left with council member Newsom. Thank you. So I will start from my right to my left with Councilmember Newsom. Thank you. I guess now it's on. Thank you. I don't have anything to report.
The HSLAC Executive Committee will be leaving a week from tomorrow. Um, and there will be special meeting of the full HSLAC committee on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. I believe that is three to five in the afternoon. Um, and and that, at that time, we're going to go through um, the half-three and half-four grant recommendations. These are the the latest tranches of funding from the state uh, for grants. The the total with those two and a couple and a few other sources is about five point five million dollars in in grant funding available. There were twenty point eight million dollars in requests, um, most of which are coming from well-recognized organizations doing, you know, well-recognized important projects. So this uh, finding, finding our way through what that recommendation was going to be was uh, we ran a ground on it in the last full HSLAC and scheduled a a special meeting in order to be able to get those recommendations to the Board of Supervisors in a timely fashion to be able to allocate the funds proper, funds properly. We do need to walk out of that meeting with a recommend, specific recommendations. Uh, at least for half-three, uh, so that uh, we make sure we get the money.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, regarding the IDMA, Mayor Integrated Waste Management Authority. We are not having a meeting tomorrow. We would normally have one, but that's a good sign. It means we reached the point of boring stability that we've wanted to achieve. But I am serving on the uh, Idaho Budget Committee again and we met. And uh, the good news is even better than I expected. I expected that we would be looking at a rate decrease for the IDMA fee. And it looks like it will be a more substantial decrease than I anticipated. So we will discuss that with the full committee in our uh, neck, in our meeting in May. Or or, and um, and probably get approval for that for the uh, IDMA budget going forward after July first. But that'll be a further reduction for all the, you know, garbage rate payers uh, in the county now. So.
Good news.
Let's see, next Thursday, CAPSLO board meets, um, but I won't be able to attend that as I will be at the League of Cities Conference in Sacramento. I'll be with uh, city manager and I believe Mayor Proton Funk. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, at SlowCog last week, uh, another one million dollars was approved for the downtown infrastructure enhancement project. So we are good to go on that. It's very exciting. Also, you might remember our Curb and Real, Curb Real, the mobility hub where there was that sort of beautification Caltrans was calling it. And we had to basically give back the not quite half a million dollars because they couldn't find, we went out to bid and just couldn't find anybody to do the job. So that money had to go elsewhere. They were able to get back uh, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand now to apply to that and move forward with doing that project. So um, staff I know is excited to have that going and that will include, I believe, two level-two charging stations. So that will be a nice, a nice addition and a good sort of sprucing up of that area. I think bike lockers and some other things are included. So that was good news at SlowCog and as Mr. um, Contreras said, I did speak at a Generation Build last week. And uh, honored to speak alongside people like Ken Tragiro from People Self-Help Housing and others talking about the the need for more housing in our community and and what we can be doing about it uh, together. So with that, I will ask, I don't see any individual determinations on my agenda. Are there any individual determinations? Seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting to closed session. So we'll now go into closed session, discuss the items listed on the closed session portion of the agenda. I'll ask our city attorney to announce those items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council will meet in closed session on two items. The first will be conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-seven point six. The agency's designated representative will be James R. Lewis, the city manager. Employee organizations under discussion will be the Atascadero Professional Firefighters Local thirty-six hundred, Tascadero Police Association, Service Employees International Union Local six-twenty, Mid-Management Professional Employees, Non-Representative Professional and Management Workers and Confidential Employees. City council will also meet closed session pursuant to government code section fifty-four nine fifty-six point nine subdivision D one on a matter of existing litigation. The name of the case is Newton versus City of Atascadero, California Court of Appeal, Second District, Division Six, Case Number B three, 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 five, four, three.
Thank you. Um, said like an attorney, a real mouthful there. Nice nicely done. So anybody here in person uh, wanting to speak on uh, speak on any item or on the items on closed session, please come to the podium if anyone does. I'm not seeing anybody, anybody on Zoom. I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, we'll close, excuse me, that public comment period. And we'll go into closed session, recess into closed session and any reportable action will be will be reported out at our next council meeting on April twenty-third. Thank you.